This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 8th, 2015, and was posted in the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 8th, 2015, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. Please speak into the microphones. Assistant listening devices are available. Goldie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mayor Breeninger?
Here.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Here.
Councilwoman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Here.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Potts?
Yeah, here.
Councilwoman Walkovitz?
Here.
Mics are not on? How do we set the turn on? Okay. All right. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meeting held on July 7th, 2015, and the special meeting held July 30th as distributed?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walkovitz?
Yes.
Okay, I don't see anyone from Main Street here. Councilwoman George, did you want to give a Main Street minute in their absence?
Yes, Mayor, I have it in my regular reports, but I'll skip forward to that. The New Jersey Downtown Institute held the placemaking and street development program in conjunction with Main Street on July 22nd. It was here at the Reformed Church. Unfortunately, I had some personal issues come up. I was not able to make it. It was very well intended. I think they had upwards of 150 people there from all over the state. The Promotions and Events Committees are working on their 2016 events already. They are already eyeing moving some events up to Woodbridge and some of the other areas of the bid, which is a great expansion of their mission. As Mayor knows, their signage committee was working on wayfinding signs, although there has been some confusion once again with New Jersey DOT, which once again controls too much of our downtown area. They are beginning a work group to look on plans for more permanent space for both the farmer's market and the Main Street office, which I think is a beneficial thing. Right now, the building that they're in is up for sale and has some accessibility issues. So their programs are moving along well. Their budget was recently passed and approved, and they look to be on track to be very successful in staying with this plan for the rest of 2015 and 2016. The enrollments are already up for Arts in the Park, which is going to be September 20th. That event once again looks to be highly successful, even more than last year.
Thank you. All right, council reports. Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Okay. First, I want to report on National Night Out. It was a huge success as usual. It was well attended, and we had, we did some wonderful things not this year at National Night Out, such as we raised over $1,000 for the food pantry, for the food bank, which was really good. And we gave out almost 2,000 hot dogs. We gave out large screen TVs. We gave out bikes. And we had, we had a grant that we, that we used to give bicycle helmets out to persons that were in need of helmets. So it was really good. The PBA gave us a grant, and we also got a grant from the Red Cross that we were able to give out a lot of helmets and people to be fully aware of public safety. And we had our own public safety table set up to give instructions about the proper use of bicycle helmets and encourage our young people to wear their bicycles, encourage everyone, matter of fact, to wear their helmets as they go out. We also had great support from the, our fire department, our first aid, our police. Our PBA again was wonderful, and they were there to help. And the SERC team. The SERC team was there in uniform. We took some pictures, and I took some pictures of all the various areas of public safety. So that should be on our website and should be in the upcoming newsletter. And we're, I'm very pleased that we were able to get pictures of everyone to show the festivities as they were going on. The SERC team also participated. They also helped in the fire that was in North Brunswick. And we have a letter from the Salvation Army that was sent to us, giving us thanks for the SERC team help. It says, "Re SERC team volunteers." It says, "Dear Ms. Dugan, on behalf of the Salvation Army Disaster Service, please accept my thanks for the number of SERC team volunteers who served with us in the recent warehouse fire. Everyone worked well together. The SERC team volunteered pitched in and were excellent team players. Their job was primarily to serve food and beverage to the first responders, and they were encouraging, friendly, and efficient. They were, they were a large part of our success in response, and we are grateful to each and every one of them. Share our appreciation to each of your members and thank them for their support." Again, the SERC team just, they just got together. They just finished their fire academy back in June, and they have been doing a lot of wonderful work since its inception. And I'm, I'm really happy and proud that we have the SERC team in place. They're not only helping in Highland Park, but they're helping in other communities as well. On that note, switch a little bit and talk about a grant that we received. It's called Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over. And we're fortunate enough to receive a $5,000 grant, and that's a crackdown on drunk driving, and we're happy to participate in that. We're happy that we got another grant as it pertains to keeping us all safe and keeping us aware and helping our police department to do their job much more efficiently. Thank you, Mayor. That's my report.
Is that it? Thank you. Councilwoman Fine?
I do not have a report this evening. Thanks.
Okay, Councilwoman Potts?
Just a short report. I just want to make everyone aware that our summer camp program is, again, a great success this year. Our camps will actually continue through the end of next week, and then that will conclude the summer camp program. And I'll report more in future meetings as far as actual, some actual numbers, as far as attendance, but it's been great this year. Also, just a reminder that it's actually time to gear up for fall registrations for some of the sports like soccer and some of the different programs. So just a reminder to, to register for those fall sports if you're interested in doing those. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman George?
Thank you, Mayor. I've already spoken about Main Street with regard to the planning board. We had the recent hearing on the residential site, residential reconstruction. It was not favored. Part of the problem was that the formulas that we were supplied with, Ms. Hammond and the chairman of the board and I had asked the planner to actually do some calculations on what some footprints would look like, and found out that the ratios were actually significantly lower than what the plan did. And thankfully, the planning board as a result rejected that. I believe that we'll have an appropriate application with regard to that, to the ordinance when we come up to it on the agenda. Reminder to everyone, as I say at every meeting, as I said at the last planning board meetings, to come out to the zoning and planning board meetings where you see the nuts and bolts of the town being constructed. This Thursday is the hearing of the Rite Aid application. I'd encourage everyone to come. The zoning board has been kind of quiet. There aren't, there are some applications pending, but none before the board right now. With regard to redevelopment, kudos to Roseanne Barru, the chair, and the members of that agency. They've been working, although they haven't been holding a lot of meetings because they're mostly in negotiation, they are considering their first redevelopment agreement, which is a small project on Rowerton Avenue. But things are moving along. There are negotiations with other developers on projects as well, and we hope to be able to see some proposed amendments to the, to the plan very shortly. Other than that, I would simply like to, off-topic, advise that I have with me tonight Amber Jean Leest, who is a student from Edison as part of our firm's, and my own personal mentoring program to generate interest. Amber Jean has been interested in government and the law, although I told her not to skip her interest in the law, since she and her father, Richard, whom I serve on some committees with in New Brunswick, went to visit Trenton, and they, and they saw, you know, what the government looked like, and she's been interested ever since then. So she's at a point where we are, she's also going to have the misfortune of sitting in on some depositions shortly to go with me on a prosecutor's night as well. She also volunteers during the week for Habitat for Humanity. She's a facilitator for the ropes course, Silver Star Girl Scout, working on her Gold Star. And I look forward to making her suffer the indignities of my profession very shortly.
Okay. All right, complete?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Erickson?
No report tonight.
Council President Walkovitz?
A couple things, Mayor. Thank you. First off, our Highland Park Environmental Commission is proud to be the beneficiary to Eagle Scout Simha Abraham's donation of birdhouses. He made nine birdhouses, three for bluebirds and six for wrens, which are hung up in our meadows' trails. It's a wonderful addition to, to the meadows, and we congratulate him on all his efforts to be an Eagle Scout. The reconstruction of Valentine Street is moving along very swiftly. Valentine from Cedar through Third Avenue has been repaved. Curbs have been repaired, and the roads have been repainted. They're moving really, really swiftly, and the road looks great. We look forward to phase two. Our automated garbage collection program is also moving along quite nicely. That's in the Triangle section. Additional information for residents that are in the Triangle that have already been identified and already received their cans can look on the Borough website. There's some FAQs there, and of course, if there's any other questions, please call our Department of Public Works. And lastly, our Habitat project is moving along as well. A couple weeks ago, we started the actual build. They'll be building on Sundays from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. Please go to the Habitat website at GPhabitat.org, and you can sign yourself up to volunteer. If you have any questions, call me or call the Borough. We can put you in touch with the right people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Borough Administrator? No, no report. Thank you. Okay. Borough Attorney?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I have just a few things. First of all, I wanted to read to you an email I received from a resident, Mr. William Swift. Dear Mayor, I am writing to commend and thank the fire department and police department for their professional response to a grill fire behind my house on Sunday, July 12th, 2015. My gas grill burst into flames Sunday afternoon, and I immediately called 911 to request assistance. Two police officers showed up first, followed by a few minutes later by several fire department trucks and fire personnel. They took the action necessary to extinguish the fire, and everyone behaved in a courteous and professional manner. The fire chief and the assistant chief remained on the scene until the Middlesex County Fire Marshal arrived. I would ask that you and the council take note of the good work of all the people who responded to the fire. We ask a lot of our volunteer fire force and the members who arrived worked very hard to bring the appropriate equipment to bear to deal with this fire. The police officers bravely investigated the fire in progress, even though they did not have protective gear. I was mainly concerned for everyone's safety, but both police and fire personnel bravely dealt with the potentially explosive fire. I hope the council can take appropriate notice of their good work. Thank you. William J. Swift, 19 South Sixth Avenue. And Chief, I would ask that you forward the mayor and council's congratulations and warm appreciation, as well as Mr. Swift's appreciation to our fire officials and the police that helped in this matter. Thank you. Just one more thing about Night Out. It, it was packed. It, there were so many residents and visitors out there, and I had the pleasure of talking with our Assemblywoman Nancy Pinkin and her staff, who were going from municipality to municipality in the 18th district to each of their Night Outs, and they told me they felt we had the best Night Out. So please forward our thanks to the PBA and all the folks on your team that made that happen. Also, Kathy, please thank your recreation staff for all that they did to pull this off. I will. Okay. You will, we will be voting tonight on a resolution, an ordinance. Actually, we will be voting on the first four-way stop sign in the borough of Highland Park tonight. It will be on the corner of Cleveland and Second Avenue. It was requested by the residents, and our police investigated the area and found that this would be an appropriate use of a four-way stop, and I want to thank the police again for their swift action on this. And I also want to thank the neighbors on Cleveland and Second for bringing this to our attention. Finally, there is also a resolution in this packet that I'm very happy to talk about before we vote on it. It was 12 years in the making, but we have come to an agreement with the Department of Transportation, who is now allowing us to paint the crumbling decrepit wall. That is the first thing you see when you come off River Road and enter Highland Park. It's the retaining wall by the former Y. It will now be painted with a lovely motif that is reflective of the Highland Park logo. And a big thank you to the folks at the DOT who took us seriously on this and sent the paperwork for approval, which our attorney has looked at, and the resolution for acceptance of this is on our agenda tonight. And I, oh, just one last thing. The mayor's walk for tomorrow, which was originally scheduled for 6:30 a.m., is going to be postponed till next Wednesday because we have a very wet park. Okay. Any public discussion? Okay. So come up front. Tell us your name and where you live.
My name is Goldie Grossman. I live in the Triangle section in Highland Park.
And your exact address?
My exact address is 1602 Central Avenue.
Okay.
I throw out my notes. This is something I feel strongly about, and I wanted to be sure to communicate everything accurately. We love and appreciate so many aspects of this town, but the prevailing spirit is so unaccommodating to the housing needs of families such as ours that we are going to be moving out. I wonder if there was any point in coming tonight because we're moving out, but we felt that we owed it to the town to speak out. We're deeply concerned with the lack of vision for ensuring the future of a family-friendly town. The FAR proposal is restrictive, and it doesn't even address the issue of pre-existing variances, which is already a huge problem for so many homes in town. I live in the Triangle section. Our ranch home is adorable. It's teeny tiny, and when we consider it expanding, we have to go through multiple zoning board hearings and spent an enormous amount of money, all on the pre-existing variances. Between the pre-existing variances and the FAR proposal, aging homes similar to ours would have tremendous difficulty in being expanded in a way that can accommodate a typical Orthodox family. The architect we work with has worked with over 20 townships throughout New Jersey, and every time a topic comes up, she says she has never encountered a township that imposes so many difficulties on homeowners seeking to expand their homes. When we learned about the FAR proposal, it just confirmed our feeling that this town does not understand or appreciate the needs of growing Orthodox families. It's too late for our family. We need to move, but we would really like to see this lovely town begin to change their attitudes towards housing in a way that respects all of the demographics, including Orthodox families. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Come up to the podium and state your name and address, please.
I'm David Feiler.
Should be. You need to make it close to your mouth.
Well, whatever. You can hear, right?
Is there a switch?
It's okay. I can do it.
Okay, so I'm David Feiler. I'm at 1603 Central Avenue. It's funny, actually. Same neighborhood. So same thing, right? I'm here about the FAR. I'm actually surprised. There were so many people in the planning board meeting, maybe because things went the way we hoped they would go. People felt this, and there was no need to come here. I don't think that's the case. I'm equally concerned. I haven't had the need myself to do the kind of work that she's needed to do, but I've watched what she's gone through, and it's harrowing. It's frightening. I would ask, who's going to move into her house when she moves out? That house was being rented before she moved in. Thankfully, we got somebody who actually has a stake in the town, who moved in, wanted to improve, and they would let her. So she's moving out. We're going to get more renters back in, wouldn't you like, right? I've lived here for 21 years. I've owned here for 14 years. I looked for a long time. I rented an apartment for a while, my wife and I. We looked for a long time for a house. You guys know, you know what kind of housing we have around here. A lot of it was dilapidated, a lot of it was old. The only reason we were able to move in at all was we found, I hope, we found a lot where it was an old house, and the contractor had arranged to tear it down and build it back up. It's not a big house. It's not a McMansion. It's like 2,500 square feet. I wish it would be larger, but it is what it is. A lot is what it is. I will tell you that our house would be bigger than the current FAR proposal would allow. So that house, as small as I might think it would be, it is, is bigger than the township would allow. So with these rules in place, I also wouldn't be here because we never would have found a house. I would have moved into another township, would have paid, let's be honest, much lower property taxes, and then you guys have two houses where nobody's paying taxes. Skipping ahead, excuse me. All kinds of notes. Okay. So our street, we live on Central Avenue. The Triangle is an older section of town, right? There are areas where there are new houses in the Triangle on Central. A lot of them are very old. They're very old, they need work, they're very small. I'm concerned that what we're talking about here is going to freeze development there. And when there are accommodations being made, or you can get an exception if you know your neighbor across the street in Valley Street, and you can prove that they're big. Well, they're not, right? Most of our neighborhood is not that large, but the houses are in need of repair. So if the township is going to stand in the way of that work being done, those houses are going to sit without people, and they'll start to rent. So I don't know if we're looking to become a town of renters, dilapidated houses, but we're putting ourselves on that path. I don't know. I think we talked about this in the planning board meeting. Somebody threw out a number of 100. I don't know. And I'm not a realtor, so I don't know if it's a large number or not. I've heard that number, that there are about 100 houses per gallon town. I don't know if that's right or not. It seemed large to me as just a person. And if I ever want to sell my house, I have to get in line behind 100 other people who are trying to sell their house. Why are people moving out? You know there are property tax issues. It is what it is, right? School costs. We're not a big town. We don't have a big industrial base. But to add to that, restrictions on being able to make your house livable, nobody's going to want to live here. If they don't want to live here, but they can't move out because they can't sell a house, they're going to rent, right? They're just going to move out, they're going to rent their house, and that's going to be the end of the town. I don't know. I'm really unclear after the meeting that we had, the planning board meeting, what policy objective, objective we're trying to do here? What are we trying to accomplish? If we're trying to get rid of McMansions, we don't have McMansions. On top of that, we say we're going to make exceptions if your neighbors are large. So what? And the places that started this earlier, the places that, you know, the places where they started earlier, tearing down and building up, they're going to be able to continue because they started. The rest of us, we're stuck. We can't. So you still don't have McMansions. You're just going to have in one area, and then you're going to have poor areas where nobody wants to live. I'm not sure that people have really thought this through. I don't want to go over there. Hold on. Okay. And then the other thing that I've got that I'm saying, and this is kind of a long line for what I've just said, is we talked about the exceptions, and I think it's going to be next to impossible. Let's say everything else was fine, and you've got this thing that said, oh, you would get an exception if your neighbor, whatever. I'm not sure practically, even if we wanted to do that, I'm not sure that that's practically, you know, an option. How does one measure the inside of several, not even one's neighbor's house, several of one's neighbor's house, which is not going to happen anywhere? But supposedly, what I heard at the earlier meeting, was that the goal of this was to simplify things, and all of this was to avoid having to have all these exceptions. It seems like we're trying, what we're setting ourselves up for, an exception-driven policy, right? We're saying if your neighbors' houses aren't so large, you can show that your neighbors are, then you can also get exceptions. Far from having less, sort of making of exceptions. I'm just going to say exceptions, right? We're going to have more. So I, across the board, I understand what they're trying to gain, but I'm terribly concerned about the investment I'm making in my house, and the investment I'm making in this town, and what it says for the value of this town going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Okay? Please state your name and your address.
Hello, I'm Lisa Goldstein. I live on Forty Harrison Avenue. I'm a lifelong Highland Park resident. I moved in when I was three years old. I actually have questions more than a statement, and I know you had said there was information about the automated garbage on the website, but I wasn't aware, so I was just wondering if you could answer a couple of questions. I know that currently we have garbage pickup once a week and recycling once a week, and newspapers have to be tied up, and the boxes have to be tied up. My question is, with the new automated garbage proposal, are we going to be limited to one can, or are we going to be getting more than one can? How's that going to work?
So I'm going to ask Council President Walkovitz to answer your concerns. She's our liaison to DPW.
Thank you. And thanks for answering the questions. To the best that I can answer it, because we haven't addressed Harrison Avenue yet. Because we haven't addressed Harrison Avenue yet. And what we did in the Triangle was we actually looked at a map and found the streets that were most accommodating for this new garbage can, which is a little bit larger and needs a little bit more width in order for the arm to move well and easily. Harrison may turn out to be one of those. I would just say, hold tight. Don't, please don't make any purchases right now. We'll let you know on the next neighborhoods that we'll be addressing. But in general, we are giving out one large, it's a 95-gallon toter, to each residence that we've identified as part of the program, and that is for garbage only right now. And we strongly believe that that is adequate for a family. We've checked with our, with council people, as well as DPW specialists in neighboring communities. And the reason I say neighboring communities is because they live similarly to us in Edison and Matutchen, and that's, that's what they're using right now, one large garbage toter for each residence. If you would like to purchase an additional can, you can. We would strongly recommend, though, that you reevaluate what you're throwing out. I know you've mentioned that you realize that cardboard and newspapers are things that are recyclable, and that's great, and thank you for that, because that is what we're dealing with. It is, you know, it is the law to recycle, and we just, we want to encourage people to continue to recycle, and we have had many instances, and not you, but I'm taking this opportunity to remind everybody to please check your garbage. Don't dispose of twigs in your, in your large garbage toters. Don't dispose of your cardboard or your, or cans in the large toters. So, thank you.
So my question is, we're having one large garbage can.
Yes.
Currently, in my household, there are seven people. I live with my husband, my four children, and my mother. And once, garbage once a week, even with recycling, I'm stuck. The winter's not as bad, but in the summer, the stench, the rodents, it's getting to be a little more burdensome in the summer than it is during the winter where the smell isn't as difficult, but the raccoon issues and all these other issues that come with garbage once a week. I just don't see how, and especially when we have just been talking about accommodating Orthodox or large families, how on earth I would survive with one or even two garbage cans once a week with a family of seven, particularly at certain times of year, say spring cleaning. Plus, I have this recycling. If we're making this restriction, say, one garbage can, recycling, when you have to tie up your, your, newspapers, not tie up your, your cardboard boxes, that's also a little bit more burdensome, as opposed to getting, I know in Edison, they even have a large can for recycling, the same size as the toter that comes the next day. Everybody just dumps their stuff in the toter. There's not as much tying up. So now you're talking about maybe, if we're not doing recycling, turn it one large toter, and the next day, me sitting there tying up all my recycling, leaving it out. and the next day, me sitting there tying up all my recycling, leaving it out, and bulk garbage not so often. So I'm just concerned about how, how I'm going to get rid of all my garbage.
All right, so let's, if I can just review one more.
I'm just saying, when I have, if I have four children, a husband and a mom, one 95-gallon garbage can, the amount of garbage that I throw out with recycling is just, seems, it just is overwhelming to think about.
Okay, so, so let's just review really quickly. There's not going to be any change to recycling right now? So, you know, it's the same that you have, that you're doing right now, there's no change to it. I think you were given a container at one point, so you could put your newspapers in there as well.
Right, but it's also a small, we were given small containers.
Okay, but there's, okay, we're not.
See, that's my point. Once you're, once you're converting over, I'm still left with those little small containers.
But we're not converting, we're not making any changes to the recycling right now. We only have one, we have a fleet of five trucks. Four of them are the old trucks, and we only have one new automated truck. So that's not enough to do all the garbage in the entire town, and all the recycling in the entire town. So, so we're just going to take it step by step right now. So there's no change to recycling. And then, the rodent problem that you, that you mentioned, unfortunately, we've all got that. I can tell you personally, on the smaller garbage cans that I have, the raccoons tip them over, flip the lids off, and it's been horrible. The larger toters, actually, the raccoons cannot jump that high, and it also has an attached lid that stays closed, so I think you'll find some benefit to that. I don't know what you're using now.
I just don't understand, from a realistic perspective, and I'm not that much of a spatial person, but how on earth I'm going to get all my garbage?
Well, you can, you can go out and purchase a second can. We have, on the FAQs that we've posted are the specs for the different sized cans. You can get a 95-gallon, you can get a slightly smaller one, I think it's a 65.
And are we restricted to just two cans once a week? I just want to be clear.
We're not changing the schedule, so it will be, it will continue to be once a week. And if you, at present, we're not, we're not limiting anybody to a certain number of garbage cans, but we'll only be supplying one to each family.
Okay, but we could perhaps buy two, three more, and then be covered, is my question.
I would recommend you don't go out and make that purchase yet, though, because we haven't addressed Harrison Avenue.
Okay. Might I ask that when you're considering these other, you know, these other areas where there are big families, please consider allowing us to purchase multiple garbage cans, because the garbage situation already in town is just... You know, I say the rodent problem we all have to deal with, I'm paying $20,000 a year in property taxes, that's, that's gross. Like, we've had rats, where I've called the health department and said, I, I live on Ha, you don't like the stretch of Harrison I live on? I should be having rats in my garbage, where the garbage men are shrieking in the morning because they're a rat stumping house. It's disgusting.
So, so.
So that's my point, it's just I want to consider.
Absolutely.
Having more, the ability, or instead of restricting families to one garbage.
And we're not trying to restrict, yeah.
Please consider, on my tab, going to buy three more garbage cans, and then I don't have to be concerned about garbage falling out of my car.
So, so this is all very good information for us. What the D.P.W. is doing is running, using this as a pilot.
Which is why I'm here now, before it becomes.
Right. And, and there's a lot we have to learn from this new system, which is why we're proceeding cautiously and slowly. And I'm sure Council President Welkovich and the D.P.W. team will be studying all of the information we get back from the area in which the truck is going, and any input we get from people like yourself going forward.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gross? Please state your name and address.
Uh, Herb Gross, I like gardens. Not a mayor. Last month, I brought, to your attention, a terrible situation on First Avenue in Highland Park here. There are 12 blocks that are uprooted, they're shrubbery all over First Avenue, right by the bank. I asked you and members of this council to come down and take a look at it. And since last month, I've been out there every day, for a couple hours each day, hoping to see one member of the council, or yourself, which I did not see.
Well, actually, Mr. Gross, we were.
Hard border.
Excuse me, Mr. Gross.
I have this floor, not you.
Mr. Gross, please, please, there are protocols here. Just let me comment on what you said, and then you can go on. To my knowledge, I know I was out, our councilman, George was there, borough administrator was.
Code enforcement was also there.
Code enforcement and also the engineer, right?
Yes.
Okay, go on. I just want you to know that people were there.
I still have not got any kind of answer from you, Madam Mayor, or any member of the council, who is responsible for the situation down on First Avenue. In Highland Park, you had somebody, one member of this council, come down and put Xs on each block that had to be fixed by, by every homeowner. That, to me, has been a terrible insult to every homeowner here in Highland Park. You, Madam Mayor, and every member of this council, you had no right to force people to come into court and pay fines. The sidewalks do not belong to the homeowners. You know, Madam Mayor, and so do I.
Okay, let me interrupt you.
The sidewalks belong to Highland Park, not the homeowners.
Okay.
This has been a very humiliating experience for every homeowner.
Okay, Borough Attorney, would you like to address the issue of who they, who the courts have said the streets belong to?
Yes, the, you're right, the sidewalks are owned by the borough, but the responsibility of taking care of the sidewalk is the adjacent or budding property owner.
Thank you. And Borough Administrator, do you have the information from the engineer and code enforcement on what they found when they went out there?
When they went out there, they came back and told me that they were, the sidewalks were in compliance, and when the, if they weren't, the owners of the adjacent properties were notified to fix them.
Okay. So we did take a look at your concern, Mr. Gross, and they were out there, and the sidewalk, the homeowners adjacent to the sidewalks were notified. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Are you saying, Madam Mayor, that this situation will be taken care of, yes or no?
It was taken care of. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, any other comments? All right, seeing none. Clerk, would you report on advertising amendment to the Board of Health ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park, 2010, Chapter 9, Boards, Committees and Commissions, Article 7, Board of Health, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkovich?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, would you report on advertising the land use ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park, 2010, Chapter 230, Land Use Concerning Standards for Residential Reconstruction, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, at this point, because I am not happy with this ordinance, and neither is the bulk of the council, I'm going to ask for a motion to table.
If I may, Madam Mayor, even I voted against it once we did the calculations. I note that the chairs of the Planning and Zoning Board, as well, had, the three of us have requested the planner do the calculations, when we learned that the ratios, in fact, were low. It does have some salutary points that were an attempt to try and eliminate the need for variances, for people to improve their homes and increase their sizes, but at this time, I would move that we table this.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call for tabling.
Councilman Erickson?
So moved.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkovich?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, would you report on advertising the Human Relations Commission ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park, 2010, Chapter 9, Boards, Committees and Commissions, Article 1, Human Relations Commission, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing on this? May I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote?
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkovich?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on advertising the lease ordinance for the Capital Equipment and Improvement and Financing Program of the M.C.I.A. for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park and the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, approving and authorizing entering into execution and delivery of a lease and agreement with the Middlesex County Improvement Authority relating to the issuance of county guaranteed capital equipment and improvement revenue bonds, Series 2015 of the Middlesex County Improvement Authority, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any public hearing? All right. May I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkovich?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, would you report on introduction of a traffic ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance entitled, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 7, Traffic Hasn't Been Introduced in Writing and by the Council as a Whole for Consideration of Passage on First Reading by Title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkovich?
Yes.
All right. Before I get to the consent agenda, tonight, the council will be voting on a resolution to advertise a request for proposals for solar power. This is in response to a proposal that we have with P.S.E.N.G. to create a solar field in the upper meadows. This will provide backup solar power for us, but also a source and stream of income for the municipality. All right, we're going to go through the motions for adoption, and hopefully my voice will make it.
Can I have a question first?
Yes.
Earlier tonight, we heard a presentation that affects the, let's see, I'm looking to see which one it is, the reconstruction of various public roofs. Do we want to go through and get bids on both those projects?
Reconstruction of other groups.
Roofs.
Fire department.
That's for the fire department?
And the library.
And the library. This is just to, this is not to go ahead and do it, but it is to allocate the bond money if we go ahead and do it. Am I correct? Yes.
Looks like you're awarding.
No, you're awarding the bid.
Later on, you're awarding the bid for those two.
And it was, you're awarding the bid. But we don't actually have to go out and do it if we change our minds on any of them, right?
Well, if you award the bid, the bid documents say that we're supposed to start to do the work on the roofs.
Okay, and also, John, the roof for the library, which is the one I think you're talking about, anything that we might want to do with the library roof in the future would be years in the future. And right now, the roof on the library is, it would have to be done. Right.
That's all I needed.
Okay. All right. And so, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on the following. Resolution to endorse Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, Resolution to Execute Complete Streets Letter of Agreement, Resolution to Clarify the Housing Authority Member Appointment, Resolution to Amend the Annual Salary Resolution, Resolution Appointing Deputy Records Custodian for the Police Department, Resolution to Credit Water and Sewer Account, 430 Benner Street, Resolution Authorizing Stipulation of Settlement Tax Appeal, Highland Arms Park, L.L.P. versus Highland Park, Resolution to Credit Water and Sewer Account, 1010 Central Avenue, Resolution to Approve 2015-2016 ABC License, Plenary Retail Distribution and Consumption, Resolution to Approve Taxi Operator License, Resolution to Approve Bills List, Resolution to Approve Estimate Number One, Improvements to Valentine Street, Resolution to Award Bid 2015 Reconstruction of Various Public Roofs, Resolution to Advertise Request for Proposals for Solar Power, Resolution to Approve Final Payout, Resolution Supporting the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over, 2015 Statewide Crackdown, Resolution Authorizing a Memorandum of Understanding with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Route 27 Retaining Wall. And I think that's all I've got. Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
With regard to item 32, the resolution approving the memorandum, Mayor, I congratulate you, that was a very long and very tough negotiation that changed several times, and you did a great job. A vote yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkovich?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the 20, Chapter 159, 2015 Outreach?
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Susie Welkovich?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject Chapter 159, 2015, DDEF, Fiscal Year 2014?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkovich?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject Chapter 159, 2015, Federal Pedestrian Safety Grant?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkovich?
Yes. Yes.
Councilwoman Welkovich?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject Chapter 159, 2015, Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over?
Motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkovich?
Yes.
Okay. Tonight, I am appointing Leader Greenberg to a full position on the planning board and appointing Judy Shade-Monk as alternate number two to the planning board. No confirmation is necessary. Any public discussion? Okay. Just for the folks of the Cleveland Avenue area who came here a little bit after we passed the ordinance, thank you for your input on the four-way stop.